TM, it's July 9th, our regular meeting in the village. One of the trustees, we sent the file. National Justice to the Friday United States. Just a sentence.
Laurel?
Here.
Stephanie May Murphy?
Here.
Lucy Buckland is absent, Mercy Mossen absent, Chelsea Soty?
Everybody have a chance to look at the minutes that Sarah sent. Any questions issued or actions? I have a motion to approve those. Second. All in favor? Thank you. Church went around, right? Be an email?
Uh, she did send out email, but the hard copies are only there for for a second.
Any questions on vouchers? We'll put those at the end. Snapshot of voucher total.
Currently? So that's this fiscal year that we just said. This one is the one we have. A big reason for general fund being so large is here's the horse. I I think it's in the desk, but I'm not sure.
Did insurance cover any of that at the time? Remember?
No, no, they put in, yeah, yeah, please. They put in, they put into the insurance company, but there was a law that was passed in 1985 that said that insurance companies might have any underground tanks that possibly could contaminate or cause whatever problems and therefore a lot of the, a lot of homeowners as well as municipalities got caught off guard because they didn't realize that they were vulnerable. And it turns out they said, no, it's that that's the legal, legal league. So he couldn't go back and backtrack. They had to basically suck up this, I think the cleanup cost be somewhere between a million and a million one point five million.
Yeah.
With everything. And that's why we have a bond that was still staying, who knows, that's going to really be the issue.
One thing we did do this year, Sarah and I, in our discussions with Marklin Sterling, our, our insurance broker, is that we made sure that they had all of the above ground tanks in their records. And so they're all covered by insurance.
We don't have any underground tanks left.
No underground tanks. There's two above ground tanks here at the old hall and there's a couple of them in the old tiny garage. They asked specifically, how many do you have?
It's the firehouse.
Uh, above ground in, in the building.
Yeah, we got that, so.
Because we removed that well years ago. Well, behind the firehouse. I think when the village had the problem, they told us, get yours out now before it hurts.
Any questions on the end of your expenses or the beginning of your expenses? Can I have a motion to approve these vouchers?
I'll make your motion.
Second. All in favor?
Uh.
Thank you. Um, we'll come back. Any adjustments? Yeah, alright.
Um, nothing too crazy. I know the numbers aren't up there. I passed it around to the trustees. I didn't have a chance with doing the carnival sub to get all of the rescue squad numbers. I know the, our ambulance has gotten out about 10 times in front of the hospital, about seven. They've been bumping up the numbers there, trying to help out and taking care of the second column districts. Other than that, nothing too crazy. Since Matt's not here, I'm making mention of it. Uh, we, tonight starts the carnival up at the Thorn building.
Yeah.
All the rides and everything, we're starting it back up. Hopefully all goes well there. And the only other thing I have is we had another two members join. Galalia Rios and Lauren Weintraub. I'll make sure I email you the names to add to the list there. But, uh, other than that, that's all I've got at the moment.
That's great. Thanks, Tom. So, just a couple, as I was looking at some of the calls recently, and you may not know the answer. Like, sometimes people, especially at this, the group home on, uh, Nine Partners, and, um, sometimes people just literally request an ambulance for no medical reason whatsoever.
They, so sometimes what it is, is if a home like that has someone who needs to go get tested for routine lab work almost, and they don't have someone at the facility who can take them to the hospital or to the doctors, they will request an ambulance to transport for five hours.
It's like a waste of money.
It, it is for us, and it ties up the medic for two hours almost for them to bring them out. Unfortunately.
It's like a state law.
It's kind of a, once they call 911, nine, the county can't say, no, that's a stupid reason we can't send in. Otherwise, they're held liable, so we're, no. The medics, the EMTs will sit there and go, do you really need us? Or can someone, can you find someone to drive them? Unfortunately, some state run places, they go, no, not our problem, take them.
Questions for Don?
No. One.
Um, according to budget, we were having a budget about to increase the NEP contract. And there was a quest made from the town to do an assessment of what would we cost, what would we take to have our own EMS service.
So I started doing some digging into that, and the numbers I was getting back were higher than what NEP was going to charge us. By the time we, um, hire EMTs, medics, pay them our least wages, we would have to either rent a place for them to stay or the firehouse.
I'm more supportive of the fact that it's, it's not tenable, but given that this question is going to come up again next March, I'd like to recommend that you put together a, a sizing and run it by the village and the town.
Sure.
We put on the shelf, so the next year when the question comes up, you can pull it out and say, this is why.
Sure.
You're just going to have that curve, because it's going to come up again.
Yeah.
Alright, but I totally support the rationale.
Yeah, the, the cost was high. Just the fact that we'd have to purchase a second ambulance.
Sure.
Again, to have the backup.
Let's leave that, you know, on, on, on file, so you can.
Yep.
Thanks.
No, not a problem. So, do you guys have any other questions?
That's it for now.
Alright, we're going to head up to the carnival first. See you guys there.
Go earn that fire truck.
Yeah.
Right, so we move this, please. Uh, Chief Dorkin is sick, been under the weather for a couple days, so, uh, I guess he sent this in. It's a gander out. Uh, I think we do have one of the new, one of the new hires starting maybe this week. Who's a, I think he's currently still an officer with the city of Kipsey. Um, and he'll be taking some of the day shifts and maybe some of the carnival shifts as well. And your investigations. I have been hearing, um, a lot of parking issues in town, especially with Council Seppas, Stewart's across the street, and, um, so just keeping ears out, I guess, for any feedback you might have from people. Certainly a lot busier now, weekends especially. Where there was like Facebook chatter about locals not being able to go to Stewart's. So let's make sure we kind of keep an eye on things. We can speak to the businesses, we probably should, but it's probably too early to do anything yet besides just getting some feedback from people. Questions for, I guess, me and the police, I don't know. Alright, perfect. Okay. Highway, let's go to highway.
Uh, this month, Ethan and the boys mowed all the village properties. Finished painting some curves, finished brush pickup throughout the village. They did a lot of drag box work, which is great. It's nice to see them using some laptop. They did 16 tons off of booth court. Had salt in place, road, church street, Weatherford Lane and Elm Street. They, this is kind of nice. We shared service supplies by Duchess County VPW for pumping out all the catch basins. They're sucking them all out. So that's pretty good. Sucked out 40 catch basins, to be exact. Setting up another date for the fall to continue that operation, so we get them all cleaned out. Fixed and repaired two major sink holes on Maple Ave and Hay Ave. They were caused by rotten drainage pipe. He has pictures of everything too, which has been noting everywhere where the scallopized pipe that started rotting in the ground.
So there's maple?
Yeah, there's some, that's, that's what the salt does, when it gets into the catch basin, runs down the lines. He performed maintenance on 2019 and 2015 F-550s. Wrote and sent out the tree removal bits with trustees Buckland. Somewhere brush pickup dates July 14th through August 11th and September 8th. Oh, July 14th, August 11th and September 8th. Any questions on the roads or any of the, anything going on?
Yeah, maybe some more drag box work on, um, Pilgrim up here too as well. And the library requested a handicap spot. So I had Ethan paint a handicap spot right in front of the, um, the ramp on the other side of the street from the library. Um, we're going to sign over there as well. Uh, so they just did that.
Cool. Yeah, it'll be July, right?
Yeah. Yeah. Okay, great. You're working hard out there this heat. Yeah, it's, uh-huh.
I've got a question. Um, it's not, it wasn't responsibility, but is there any way we can motivate DOT to paint the crosswalks along Franklin, especially as you've done all the other roads, believe it, use that space, poor quality. Those crosswalks are.
Looking over that email you had sent from a couple months ago for the, for the town situation, and I think we, you had also proposed additional, like the, the lit, the flashing crosswalks on Franklin.
Right.
So I can follow up on, on both of those things with that guy, I think, once we.
Yeah, they, they said they would put in the plan for the flashing crosswalks.
Yeah.
But it wasn't going to be in.
Yeah, he said it would be a while.
And the last job you've done on the village road just exacerbates what poor quality the crosswalks along Franklin. Which, by the way, it's not just on Franklin, it's those, those putting up to Franklin that are responsible.
Okay.
Okay.
Thanks.
See if we can do that. Mike?
Yeah, just, just letting you know, one of the, uh, part of the pledge elements that, that Eldar Shumunov is working on right now is one I asked him to start last year called Safe Streets. And it's basically going to, going through the, not just contacts with the school itself, but looking at the infrastructure of the village with people and how they're getting to school with sidewalks and whatever. And he's, he's trying to make a push at this point to identify certain areas near Church Street and especially in the olden place and places like that, where you do have kids walking all the time and be able to see if we can make recommendations to get, whether it's, I know it's our roads, but get help to get signage there and potentially more, more warning areas and better crosswalks for that. Just not as an increased pledge element, but the fact that that's one of the things that you can sometimes get money for from, uh, politicos, assess, or anytime you can get, make this route school safer, that's something they like to jump on, so they may be actually ramp. That's available for that type of.
Actually, I can add something to that.
Correct.
The safe, there is grant really available for sacreds to school. Um, so I can, I don't think we're going to work on that, but I can check with our deputy mayor because we got two million.
Well, interesting.
For sacreds to school for. But again, it, it's, like you said, they'll do this piece of it, but if you need to, please catch please. I mean, there'll be other things that we'll have to do, but if you want them to get the information on that grant, that's fine for me.
I'll be here to, yeah, at least look, see what they're offering. It'd be nice if they.
To get some.
The streets nice.
Either for the sidewalk, yeah, even sidewalks.
Do some of the roads.
Yeah.
Lots of drive on them.
Right, there was a request put in three or four years ago to have that sidewalk extension go from, um, Franklin Avenue all the way, all the way down to the school just outside of the village quarters. They stayed, so. And, uh, we weren't able to get that done.
Yeah, it'd be good to continue Church Street sidewalk to the high school entrance, you know? He's just stopped at dead ends at the, uh, at the condos there. Yeah, it doesn't make it all the way to the school entrance. You have to go up, uh, Elm or Alden.
Maybe they should build that. I've got $60 million, maybe they should build the sidewalk.
That would be nice.
I see a lot of kids taking the bus to school in the village. I used to walk to school.
I didn't.
It's old fashioned, who knows? Um. Yeah, something like that. Scott?
Alright. Um, start with the water. Uh, oh, maintenance and sampling, uh, we had a service line leak at Sixth and Perry Drive. It's been repaired. Thank you to the Murphys for that.
Thank you, Murphys.
You're welcome. Um, and we read all the water meters. Bill's will be going out soon.
I assume the water levels at the, uh, clear falls are sufficient. Yeah.
Think that plenty of rain.
Good.
No worries there.
Yeah. Correct? Good.
And sewer, oh, ma- maintenance and sampling, uh, we hauled sludge. Uh, had the generator serviced, uh, repaired sewer lateral for 28 merit, which was out back to Friendly Lane. And we cleaned over there.
Any, um, other work?
Currently, they are doing my camera work. So, they should be done even tomorrow, maybe Friday.
But the ORF, the, uh.
We've been working on it.
Education.
Yes, my compressor died, so we used the blower that we had, the blower, can't trip it out, so then I had the guys bringing the compressor and that died, so.
Good.
There's nobody breathing down our back, so.
Right now, there's not, but let's just like, make sure that if they do,
Yeah.
we have something good to tell them. Or I'm going to be caught.
No, no, definitely.
Stuck on that.
Yeah. All levels are low, so, which is good.
Okay. Questions for Scott? Sueses? Public? Mike?
Uh, just an updated report. We are on Climate Smart Communities, uh, which I think most, most of the general public knows, but we were turned down initially in June for approval for bronze status. Uh, we ended up, when they looked at our entire application, they found seven pledge elements that they had questions about, and therefore we were short by 14 points. So in the last five to six weeks, the Climate Smart Test Force has gone back on those, on the seven, uh, elements, and we worked six of the seven completely with new photographs, new narratives, uh, other, other things to back up and answer their feedback and questions that they may have had. Uh, as well as making some corrections, math corrections on the greenhouse gas emissions report. So, um, we've had different test force members helping out on different pledge elements and all the work that they've done is back. Tim and I spent the, spent like two four hour sessions putting it all together, so, I've been, I've been including you in the emails, Mayor, so that you can see where we are with access to the portal. And, uh, already, we, we have to have it in by Friday morning. We want to hit the pledge, the submit button tonight, but wanted to discuss it here in case anyone on the board or yourself had some questions.
You want to just jump from here to there and jump, and jump just.
No worries.
Not a problem. This is the, um, big project they were all working on that we didn't end up getting by a few points.
Yeah.
The new application session closes on the 11th, so the committee's been working very hard. And honestly, Tim and Mike have been working the hardest. I've been seeing them here on Fridays, all sorts of hours, just not working very, very hard to get this done. So, I, everybody really appreciates, especially YouTube's hard work. You know, if we get this bronze status, it's going to give us a lot more opportunities to get some grants to help pay for the sewer plant and, uh, you know, other things in the building as well. So this is big, a lot of bureaucracy, um, a lot of paperwork, but much appreciated for both of you especially, so thank you.
Thank you.
We, we will be hearing, I think they, they gave us the date would be September 5th, so we'll know in two months.
Correct? Any questions about that for them or anything? Thanks, guys. Um, thank you, Scott. I'm not going to skip you this time.
Um, okay, so building department, we issued six building permits, a one certificate of compliance, one municipal search, one short term rental application. I believe that was a renewal. And a total fees collected $19,259.28. We're getting some in. One of those is a, is a new build house, so with the new fee schedule, a big chunk of that was about $10,000, and then, uh, Reeder Bricks has, has a project they're working on. So they, that was about $5,000 or $6,000, so. But yeah, that's pretty good for the beginning of, yeah, beginning of a fiscal year. They, the, uh, planning board, they have a public hearing set for Monday. July 14th is for a lot line adjustment. And, um, Justin is working on renewals, and he's done three, um, for short term rentals that I know of. So that's all I have for building.
Okay. Um, this is why we updated the fee schedule last meeting and wanted us to do that for this exact reason. So this was great, good timing. And.
Where's the new build?
On Nine Partners?
On Nine Partners, yeah.
Oh, that's right, yes.
Lot.
Oh, those are. It's the, the new build is down on the other end, not waiting for it. Perfect.
Um, and just another kind of code, uh, concern that I've heard about as well. There's a lot of houses that, you know, of sidewalks and that have hedges, the sidewalks. Uh, we've sent some letters out to people. But if everybody that has hedges could please keep them trimmed so people can walk safely on the sidewalk instead of having to go out in the street. Alden, there's always been issues on Front Street, uh, there's been issues, so, um, we've sent some like educational letters out at this point, but I think we're, we're done being nice and sane people, so, um, let's, let's keep the sidewalk clear and safe, please, everyone. Okay, thanks, Sarah.
Alright, and, um, for just the regular treasurer report, have the bank balances for June, and as you can see, tax collection is hot and heavy. And I think I have. Yeah, so we collected $1,033,351.90 in the month of June. And I want to say, I, I know I put in a bunch today too, so I, I think we're only at like maybe 18% left to collect, if I remember correctly. We received the DAZN money finally. So that was good, thank you, Mayor, for pushing and.
And former mayor.
That was great.
Delaware as well?
Yes, yes, it's perfect. And then I also mailed out the SBA invoices to town residents. That does include that bond amount. So far, I haven't had any angry calls, so, so that's good, good news. And, um, that's about all I have for treasurer, just regarding treasurer.
Of course, Witt wrote up a, a very succinct and educational, um, kind of blurb regarding the SBA invoices. As you may remember, it was like a big increase for the town residents for the sewer uh, because of the Bennett pump station, which basically only them, only they use. So we really, you know, made them pay for it, which I think is fair. Um, and no, no negative issues so far, so, so thanks to Kirkwood for that as well. Okay, so, let's discuss the budget adjustments and then the year end wrap up. I think Alden, Alden won, probably makes sense.
Can you explain?
Maybe you can explain for everybody's benefit, like, first, what, what a budget adjustment is. Let's keep, let's, let's keep it simple.
Okay, so, um, if a budget is, so there, you can do a budget adjustment from an expense to an expense where you're reducing the budget in one expense line item and increasing i- in the other line item. You can also do some of the budget amendments that we have, um, presented for you tonight are, are between the revenue and the expenses. Again, the increase to the revenue and the increase to the expense, which increases the overall budget by those exact amendments. You would do that, like, in the first case, you would do that. We received a donation, a police donation, and then they wanted to use it for their equipment, so we increased the donation by 1,000, because we received that. We increased the, um, expense where they're going to use that out of. Not always are, are donations allocated to an expense. A lot of things, they just come in, they're just received.
Right.
So the other, the other, um, budget adjustments could be the, like, the police department grant. They receive a grant, and we increase the budget in the revenue in anticipation of that grant, and we increase the budget in the expense in anticipation of sending that grant. And we do this so that we don't charge $24,000 to equipment and throw their budget, their regular budget out. So that, that's kind of the purpose of the budget amendments is to kind of always keep track. And, um, again, the CHIPS one, um, we went over the CHIPS by $17,026, but we also, $17,026, but we also received the additional funds. So it, so it didn't look like the CHIPS was over budget in the $51.12. We increased the budget there as well as the revenue where it came in. We moved the, the New York class money, the tennis courts, so we did the budget adjustments there. And then we did a transfer to the capital for sidewalks. And then these were throughout the, the year. Um, the, the, and then in addition to these, we go through, Sarah and I go through the budget for '24, '25, and we always. And we always try and stay within each department in negatives and positives and moving them around. So we do that all the way through as much within the department as we can. And then we go through and we try and make sure we have the negatives in the budget. And I think the general on water came out, I think the sewer was, the sewer we were just, oh. Sewer was a little bit tough this year. It, it seemed like there were a lot of expenses in that, in the, in the sewer, uh, equip, or sewer capital. So the, this is just kind of general housekeeping for the twenty four, twenty five budget. Because at the end of twenty four, twenty five, the budget zeros out. None of this carries over to the new year. So, which leads me to that, the, the next point, which is the fiscal year twenty five, twenty six police tech grant. So we had a hundred and two thousand three seventy five left over in the tech grant. But it does not roll over into the budget for twenty five, twenty six. And to keep it kind of separated from the twenty five, twenty six budget, we moved it out of general and put it in a grants capital account. Because he's not quite sure when he's gonna spend. I think one of them is gonna spend soon, but he doesn't know when he's gonna spend the rest of it.
Right.
So it's, I'm not sure how else to explain it. It's just kind of of a way to keep, keep yourself on your annual operating budget and knowing that you have all these other variations like grants, capital projects and other things running.
Okay, thank you.
Was I saying, please give us a solution to it?
Any questions, comments from the co-ees? Any questions from the public besides Tim?
Not for me.
No, no one? Okay, Tim?
So one question I have is, why is the sewer admin contract expense over by twenty seven thousand dollars? And I saw in the May.
We charged like the EPA work.
Yes, didn't you have additional?
Well, is that what happened?
All, all this EPA, all this engineering stuff, it's not in our regular operating budget. And all these bills came in, but I think that's where we put it.
Okay, that's where, okay, that makes sense. Because usually admin C E is just, you know, the bookkeeping and what, and it's our.
I don't, I don't have that in my normal budget, because I, you know, all these fees, it's all totally separate.
Got it, thank you.
I think that also is what was the sewer.
For sure.
About three thousand, yeah.
That and we've also were tasked with doing extra testing based on our new permit, which I didn't have in the budget last year.
It's these permit stuff doing their rest expenses there.
Some of that testing is like seventeen hundred dollars every time I do it.
Is that gonna be an ongoing?
It's quarterly. I have one more quarter to do. I had two quarters of last year's funded. This year, I got two. But with the new permit, whatever, it's issued, the new, the new new permit. I think it's gonna be a regular back to the home.
And then as a reminder as well, we had a lot of legal expenses for the fiscal year as well. And that was unforeseen, not budgeted for, not gonna happen again. But that was a, that was a big hit as well.
Do you have a motion to approve the?
There's no other questions. I, can I have a motion to approve the twenty four, twenty five budget adjustments?
I'll make that move.
Second, all in favor?
All right, thank you.
Motion passes.
And one for twenty five. More of a transparency, just to let you know that's what we did.
Want a resolution to that as well?
Thank you.
So now. Yeah, I invited Karen to come tonight to, to kind of give us a sense of how twenty four, twenty five kind of shaped out. So we'll, we're gonna go through that snapshot now.
Okay, um, we'll start off with the ex, like with the expenditures. And Sarah did a really nice job laying them out and putting and depart, departmentalizing them. Some of the highlights were annual increases to utility plus electric, the workers comp. And then as the mayor said, we did have a pretty big legal fee in the general fund. The fire department, they upped their reserve contribution. Police department, equipment upgrades and hiring new officers. And then the CHIPS went above the paving and sidewalks. I think we were reimbursed for most of it, but there was some parts of the CHIPS that we had to pay for out of our own budget. If you wanna, can you scroll up just for that chart, please?
The pie chart.
Yeah, the pie chart. So I think this pie chart gives like a nice picture of kind of the percentage of where the expenses go. You can see the big chunk of the green is the highway. Right below the highway, the purple is the ambulance. And if you go over to the other side where the gold is, that's the fire department. And then the general fund is the blue on the left hand side. That, that's one of the bigger pieces of the pie. But everything, everything that's not anywhere else goes into that, goes into that piece. So that kind of gives you an idea of, of the expenditures. So as well, we do that for the revenues. And if you go up just a little, I'll just, I'll just go through this. And I think this graph is a good illustration of the revenues. And the property tax is about forty six percent of the budget. And then the fire contract is twenty seven percent. And then you can see that we do get quite a bit from state aid and grants. We did get a really big grant for the police department. So I think that, that is in that little piece there. And the CHIPS is a pretty good, good portion of it. Just generally speaking, there are many municipalities that have fifty, fifty five and even sixty percent property taxes. So I do commend everyone's work on, on keeping the property tax percentage of revenue down and working on the other piece and trying to increase the other revenues besides property tax. State aided and mortgage tax distribution by the county remain constant, better budgeting. And again, I, I give them credit for working with departments monthly and knowing where they are in their budgets. Some line items exceeded expectations and others came in just under it. We also made some really good asset revenue from our investments in New York class. Property tax remained, remained under the two percent tax cap last year. And the tax rate for twenty four, twenty five is five dollars and ten cents per thousand assessed value, which was up twenty five cents per thousand from the year before. This is budget revenue and expense. This kind of gives you a little picture of, the green is the budget, the blue is revenue and the gold is the expenses. And it gives you just a kind of a broader view of where we are staying within our budget. And I think, I think all the departments look, look pretty good. You know, I mean, I think, you know, we've had, we had some unforeseen expenses. So the general fund expenses were slightly higher than the revenue, which we try and work on that in the current year. And the water fund, the revenues, it were a little higher than the expenses. And then again, the sewer, we kind of talked about the sewer and, and there's some more expenses that were in the sewer. So all in all, it looks like, you know, compared to the budget, our revenue and expenses are fairly close. So this is an analysis of fund balance. And the way we, the way we do this is we take the twenty three, twenty four fund balance from our annual financial report that we did last year. And we add the revenues and we subtract the expenses. And we get an estim, estimate of our fund balance. So, you know, without reading every number, we're kind of looking at like eight hundred thousand in general, two hundred in water, two hundred in sewer. I, I always like to make the note and that it's important to note that fund balance is a net position of our considering cash, receivables, payables, due to, due froms, pending grants and transfers in and out of capital projects. It's important to maintain a healthy fund balance. If there is a high fund balance and the board feels like there's a one time, one time project or one time purchase that they would like to do, they may decide to use fund balance. Fund balance is not another account. It's just kind of like for New York class, you know, some of the money's in there, some's in cash. But I also just want to point out that we just did a budget amendment for a hundred and two thousand for June that's gonna reduce that eight hundred and forty nine fund balance. So it, it's, this is just at a point in time of five thirty one. I also like to make the point that we have not totally finished closing and doing our annual report. Sarah and I are still working on that and our deadline is July thirty first to have that filed. So that, this is just like kind of a broad picture of where we are. And then kind of, kind of building on that, on that fund balance analysis, it's just a little fund balance history. And I know several years ago when I kind of started helping out, I think Tim knows this too, that water and sewer had fund balance. I mean, they were really, really low. We were borrowing from the general to pay water and sewer bills and then.
And no chance for reserve money.
And yeah, then we couldn't, no chance for reserves to move, we just kind of established this in the last few years. And same with the general fund. I mean, it, you can see that in the last few years that, that the fund balance has grown. And again, I do wanna to attribute that to good budgeting, to, to the departments, to, you know, Sarah, you know, just making sure that they stay within their budget and that they report everything. So we maintain adequate fund balances, we continue to monitor expense, we budget responsibly and always looking for safe viable sources of revenue that will stabilize our portfolio, so.
Yeah, just want to clarify, so the eight hundred and sixty thousand dollars, that includes the four hundred and sixty thousand for the fire truck.
Correct.
Yeah. So it's important to look at, you know, what, what's, I call it unrestricted.
Right.
Four hundred thousand.
I can break that up, right, that's correct.
That's a good number you can look at. When she talks about emergencies that come up, you know, you need money you don't have, you can use, you can use four hundred thousand, which you have available. Because the four sixty three is, is separate.
I, I can break that out, I can break that out, but yes, that is a good point.
Your charts don't show, the bar graphs don't have the last eight.
The what?
The, the, the bar graphs don't have the twenty four, twenty five dividends.
Because that's a history.
Because we haven't finished one of those yet. We haven't closed.
Oh, you haven't closed, all right, okay.
This is just, like I said, this, this is just a little.
You just did a little fun time traveling.
I, I mean, it's not gonna be, it's probably not gonna be much different. I, the fund balance may go down just.
At least for the new mayor, you change it so it goes from left to right for four years. She had him going right to left and drove me crazy every time.
I don't need to drive you crazy anymore.
Why can't, why, why can't Peter? George. Nice report.
Good, thank you.
Okay, thanks Karen. Very helpful. Hopefully this year, this fiscal year, you know, we're not gonna have a lot of those kind of one off expenses that we had last fiscal year, which definitely took some hits. So hopefully we can be a lot more stable than this, this fiscal year. Okay, um, let's see, business, business, not, not much to report, definitely slow summer. Any updates, you?
I'm on the, I joined a committee for the town of Washington, yeah. Uh, the park committee I joined, um, so I'll be kind of the liaison between the village and the town with whatever project that they decide to do or whatever the plan we come up with. We gotta come up with a strategic plan for it, so they're using me on that infrastructure and stuff like that, the road. Who else is on it?
Um, George, Young George, G, G four, um, there's Skylar Woods, Mike Schultz, Mike Murphy on the board, Bobby Audia, um.
And the plan is to kind of look at mostly the town park and the town pool. And what, what we can do to, well, get people going there again, you know, get some, maybe some, like a senior center, get some possible grants for it, um, how we can attract more people to spend more time there. Uh, something that maybe like, well, the infrastructure is starting to fail, I mean, it's so old, you know, so they need to come up with a project or a plan to either a whole new pool or revitalize this pool, you know, the one that they currently have. But to coordinate it, the dams are failing, you know, so it's kind of, it needs to be come up with. So I'll be the liaison there, whatever we come up with.
It's a, I believe the town of Washington Park maybe. So my son started camp there last week and, um, did you go to camp there?
Yeah, probably, and yeah, I think one year.
It used to be really big, um, I think there's like fifty kids now. From what I understand, a lot of parents want a more full time program. So I think there's talk of making it full time in the future as well. It's only until like twelve or twelve thirty. So that might kind of prevent some other kids from going. I've been in the town pool a couple times as well already this year. Julian's is running the snack bar. You know, they did like a special event on Sunday with a special chef that came in and did barbecue, they had live music. It's the most crowded I've seen in like many, many years. So it was actually really nice to see, trying some new ideas. I think that's what it needs. It's a really nice space, it's got great history and there's a lot of potential there, but it definitely needs a revamp. But I think it's a great gem for the community and it really is. So yeah, I'm excited to see what you guys can look like. So keep us in the loop, please. Anything else? Is it, is it so, anything cooking on your end?
Is everything all set with the communication, are you, everything?
I went to that meeting at Cornell and worked with this woman for a little bit. She was great and we got it all done. I don't know if they even needed it for their bronze status, because it's not FEMA approved yet, but we're all done from the village perspective, so that's good. I have one other thing. Uh, we're going to take August off, do all the vacations. I don't think we'll need it. I need to bring you guys back, we'll make it work, but I think.
We're not doing August meeting?
We're gonna just skip August.
Yeah, Nicole will still prepare like she still gets.
Well, we will still pay some bills and salaries.
Because we like the late on.
Any other questions from the public? Tim?
The I M A with the town, so you asked me to cover.
Yes, that was it, sorry.
You asked me to cover for the village tomorrow. Has the village board approved? Has there been a motion made by the village to approve the I M A? Or where, where is it?
So the I M A is with the town attorney. There's, hasn't been approved yet or signed or executed. There's, hasn't been approved yet or signed or executed. Um the I M A uh for truck traffic, it's a Franklin.
Make, make route for forty four, yeah, truck traffic.
Um I tried to go to the town board meeting last month. I got home too late, by the time I got back, they were already in the executive session. Um so I'm gonna, I'm most likely can't make it tomorrow, you can't make it tomorrow. I asked former mayor Colby to go on the village's behalf, since he was at that meeting with you. I'm gonna write uh supervisor Safari uh on a little letter from the village's point of view on, you know, the increase of of large trucks. We're not talking about pickup trucks or little, little trucks. We're talking about large tanker, construction.
Using as.
Eighteen vans passing through the village, not stopping, you know, not just.
Not even slowing down.
Not slowing down. Um it's a safety concern for pedestrians, for cyclists. For businesses, it's a quality of life issue. Um I've seen, I have seen a draft of the I M A, which I think makes a lot of sense. Basically, it it would be an agreement between the village and the town to restrict truck flow besides local deliveries into the village, reroute them elsewhere, probably using kind of share in terms like the old forty four A. We can then put up um signage and we can use the village police to enforce that. So that's the plan right now. Um I think once we have a little conversation with the town, I'm assuming uh they will execute it and then we can move on.
So does the ass end or the town will sign hopefully tomorrow?
Honestly, you know, it's not, not clear.
You don't know.
Um I think they just wanted to hear from someone from the village, that's kind of what my assumption was.
Okay, fine. Okay, cause the the I M A says a resolution by the by the village board is required, they have to sign that. And the same thing for the town. And then it says it takes ninety days for both the village and the town to update a local law to specify this change. It is for five ton per greater truck, ten thousand pounds, is a little more time.
Sounds good.
So do we make a resolution today or? I think we're probably, I think it's too late to probably do that. I don't, I don't think we're at that point yet to finalize this agreement first.
Yeah, I have. I don't know, if you were going, okay.
And then we'll pass once that agreement is signed.
And then do you know? And do you know if, do you have reviewed the I M A or not?
Not yet.
Okay, fine, okay.
But we wanna get it to them as soon as we as soon as both sides agree, even before we sign it, I think we can send it to be updated for them to opine if necessary.
Right, and then that gives you ninety days to get your local law updated too.
Yeah.
To specify.
Yeah. Hopefully by September, we can make a resolution and get this, and get this going.
Sounds good.
So I'll see you on the marketing behalf.
Great. Thank you. Thank you for going on, on our behalf.
Sir? I'm Eric Alexander. I uh with the town of Washington, I'm in the Shun Pike, and I'm a on the planning board. It's pretty full disclosure, so I'm a candidate for legislature. But I was interested in your revised fees for your planning board. Our chairperson, Susan Mead, was asking another member of the board to look at our fees, see how we can streamline that. When someone comes to the planning board, they just came from the Z B A, they had a public hearing there. They had a public hearing with us. Frankly, we don't really have rationale for the amounts of escrow that recipe people for. So I'd love to uh pick your brain if it's appropriate here, if we could pair notice and see if we can make sense of some way to reduce the cost for our residents to come to play.
Sure.
Right?
Yeah, we're fine.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Sure. Okay, um if there's nothing else, can I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion in a second.
All in favor? Motion to adjourn. Very cool.